What's going?
It's going good.
Sondra, you ready to go?
I'm ready.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and call the City Council Meeting of September the 15th to order. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Tannett, Schottmeyer.
Here.
Luttrell.
Present.
Long.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Marsh. Kenyon.
Here.
Petty.
Here.
Mayor Jordan.
Here. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All righty then. Good evening, everyone. The first thing that we have tonight is the nominating committee report. Mark, I believe you have that?
And I don't have it in front of me. Do you have a copy of it?
Well...
Usually it is here.
Uh-huh.
Sondra, do you have a copy of that?
I do not, but I can get you a copy if you want to go on to the next order of business.
I need her copy. It wasn't in the packet. I can find what I sent in.
Do you want to come back to that? We can come back to that. Everybody good with that? I can go ahead and do the consent agenda and then we can come back to the nominating reports. Everybody good with that?
Sure.
All right. Okay. I'm going to go on to the consent agenda and we'll come back to the nominating report after the consensus.
Here it is.
Okay. Well, here it is.
Mayor, I have it.
All right.
Okay, for the nominating committee, again, we had a lot of really good applicants. However, we were disappointed there were some boards that we received no applications for, so I want to encourage individuals on a quarterly basis to look at openings and see if there might be something that you're interested in. Those individuals that didn't get selected this time, I hope that they will consider to reapply. We see a lot of reapplications. And for this slate that I'm nominating this evening, for the Board of Adjustments, we have Stephen Clowney for one unexpired term ending March 31st, 2016. The Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals, there were no applications received. The Energy Improvement District, Cameron Baker, one term ending December 31st, 2017. The Public Facilities Board, there were no applications received. The Town and Gown Advisory Committee, there were no applications received for the Ward One Representative. For the Ward Three Resident Term Ending September 30th, 2017, Teresa Williamson. And for the Walton Arts Center Council, Doug Cummins, one unexpired term ending June 30th, 2018. Mayor, I submit this slate for consideration.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to second to accept the nominating committee's recommendation. Correct? Any discussion on that? All right. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Luttrell.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Okay. Thank you all. On the consent agenda, number one, approval of the September 1st, 2015 City Council Meeting minutes. Number two, a resolution authorized the purchase of 36 kennel doors from Mason Company of Leesburg, Ohio in the amount of $19,554 plus applicable taxes to replace the existing deteriorating kennel doors at the Fayetteville Animal Shelter. Number three, a resolution to approve a joint funding agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey for Water Quality Sampling of the West Fork of the White River at a cost to the city of $7,000 to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Beaver Watershed Alliance to fund the city's portion of the joint funding agreement and to approve budget adjustment. Number four, a resolution award bid number 15-46 and to authorize a contract with Comanson Asphalt Company Incorporated in the amount of $301,201.16 for the construction of the Lake Fayetteville Trailhead Parking Lot Project to approve a project contingency in the amount of $30,000 and approve budget adjustment. Number five, a resolution award bid number 15-49 to authorize the purchase of aluminum shoring from United Rentals North America Incorporated in the amount of $29,561.54 plus applicable taxes for use by the Water and Sewer Division. Number six, a resolution award bid number 15-50 and to authorize the purchase of 17 mobile computer systems from Future Link of Illinois Incorporated, Link of Illinois Incorporated, in the amount of $80,556.50 for the use by the Fire Department to authorize the purchase of additional mobile computer systems as needed through December 31st, 2015 in an amount not to exceed $17,000 and to approve budget adjustment. Number seven, a resolution authorized acceptance of the 2015-2016 Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Grant, the amount of $112,900 and to approve budget adjustment. Number eight, a resolution to approve a two-year lease agreement with Arnold L. Hollingsworth for the hangar located at 4568 South School Avenue and office space in the airport terminal building in the amount of $4,687 per month. Number nine, a resolution approved T-hanger lease agreements in 2015 and through 2016 at the current rental rate or as adjusted upward by the Airport Board for all T-hangers rented at the Fayetteville Executive Airport. Number 10, a resolution authorized contract with Real Assets Incorporated to represent the city in selling approximately 1.25 acres of city-owned real property on the Old Wire Road near Gully Park for a 6 percent commission. Number 11, a resolution authorized contract with Gov. Deals Incorporated, Montgomery, Alabama pursuant to a national joint powers alliance purchasing agreement for the provision of online auction services for the sale of surplus or obsolete city property. Number 12, a resolution authorized the acceptance of a 90-10 assistance firefighters grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency in the amount of $65,883 for the purchase of washerd extractors and drying cabinets for the Fire Department and to approve a budget adjustment. Number 13, a resolution to adopt the pre-hazard mitigation plan for Washington County and the City of Fayetteville as required to qualify for future Federal Emergency Management Agency pre-hazard mitigation funding. And number 14, a resolution to approve a six-month extension to the contract with the Federal Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Consulting Services in the amount of $82,500 and to approve a budget adjustment. I'll accept a motion to second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve consent agendas read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Luttrell.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Okay. Under unfinished business, number one, an ordinance to amend Section 172.05 of Unified Development Code to remove minimum parking standards for non-residential uses. I will entertain a motion to go to the second reading.
So moved.
We have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Luttrell.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Whereas removing minimum parking standards for non-residential uses will advance city plan 2030 goals of reducing sprawl, prioritizing infill development, and promoting traditional town form, and whereas minimum parking standards were primarily developed based upon parking surveys that measure peak demand, and whereas requiring a minimum number of parking spaces based upon a limited number of times a year when a parking lot will be completely full is a wasteful use of valuable land, and whereas landowners and developers are periodically denied the ability to adaptively reuse their property due to parking minimum requirements tied to specific land use categories, and whereas the potential economic development opportunity in streamlining of city code is a benefit to the city's development climate. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 172.05 standards for the number of spaces by use of the Unified Development Code by repealing and replacing it with Exhibit A.
Okay. Jeremy, what do we have on that?
Mayor, as discussed at the last meeting, there were requests by the council members to have this at full, three, full separate readings, so we would request this be left on the second reading. I will note that we've been working on a new version, hopefully combining the City Attorney's Office and our language in some way, and we'll have that for you by the next agenda session for review.
Okay. Any questions from the council for Jeremy on this? Do we have any public comment on this? We're going to be looking at this obviously next week and two weeks as well. So is any public comment on this? Okay. Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council. Council okay with leaving it here?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's go on to new business. Number one, a resolution approved special needs assistance program grant agreements with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the total amount of $414,161 for the city to administer programs to assist homeless Fayetteville residents. Yolanda, I believe you have this?
Yes. This would actually be approving the grant agreement so that we can administer and complete grants that were started by a nonprofit, and so they would be assisting homeless residents of Fayetteville to actually have housing, and so this would cycle through different individuals to help them get back on their feet.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Yes. Do we have any questions for you, Yolanda? Anybody?
Mayor.
Yes, John.
I always like to discuss HUD projects, and I find HUD a very fascinating organization, and the scandals that has beset that organization through the years under Republican and Democratic administrations. So tell me exactly, this $400,000, how will these funds be dispersed into our community? Will someone file an application with your office?
What will happen is that there will be, of course, an application process. The goal is to obtain housing for individuals. It's actually three grants. One of the grants actually will help individuals with tenant-based rental assistance, so that will be assisting them with their rental payment, and that would be for homeless individuals. Then our second grant, which makes up the total, is for leasing and payment of leasing for individuals that are homeless and disabled. And then we have a third grant, which basically would help, of course, with the whole leasing component, and this would be units throughout the city working with landlords to provide homes for the homeless, and this would be for the chronically homeless and disabled.
So again, how do, if I were a homeless person, or if I had a friend that was a homeless person, who wanted to avail himself or herself of this money, how would they go about doing that?
Well, we would work with them. We'd have to have a caseworker to determine what their status is, what their needs are, and then, of course, to qualify them as homeless individuals and meet the criteria. And at that point, we would have to go out, and I think there are already some individuals, this is a program that had already started, so there are individuals that are already working with a nonprofit, and so we would continue those relationships, and then we would try and get the homeless folks that need help, and they would cycle through the program, and hopefully they would come back into society and be productive citizens once again.
I guess what I'm trying to get at, is there any potential for discretion on the part of the administrator, where you might have a thousand people apply, or a hundred, or whatever the magic number is, that might exhaust the funds? How would you distinguish who should get money and who should not get money?
Well, there are only a certain number of slots, so you can only help a certain number of people at a time, and then they're allowed to be in those positions for a certain period of time. So then, once they cycle out, then you're getting new people in. So the goal is to help people get back on their feet and provide them a home.
So how do you distinguish? If there are only so many slots and all the slots are filled, what do you tell the people who aren't in those slots? Try again next time?
Well, it's going to be challenging, I think, to find places that will continue to work with us, so if you're saying to me, is there going to be like a waiting line of people into these homes, I don't think that's going to be the case, because we're going to have to make sure that we get those individuals that are ready to go into the homes, we have a place to house them, because the goal is for them to progress, and not everybody's going to be at that same spot at the same time.
I can understand. Individuals are different.
Yes.
Their goals, their achievements, et cetera. Well, I'm naturally skeptical of HUD and the programs. I don't like giving people a handout. I like giving people a hand. I know of situations personally where in the fifth, sixth, and seventh generations of families living on government payments. I don't think that's a good thing. I think that's a new form of slavery, if you'll forgive me, for that comparison, but I want people to be independent, I want people to produce for themselves instead of depending on government assistance. I understand if our program is just to temporarily help someone get on their feet, fine, but I don't want it to become a dependency for our thing.
That's not the goal of this program, and that's why there are slots, and people cycle through, and there's case management, so it's an ever-evolving, working with an individual to get them back to the point that they're standing on their own.
Very glad to hear that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council on this? Okay. What public comment do we have? Please introduce yourself when you come up to speak, and everybody gets one turn to Michael as council member asks you, and directs comments to myself, and if you have questions, we'll try and get those answered, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the offer to be able to speak on this, and I share John's skepticism about things of this nature. I am a very generous person by nature myself, and one of my concerns, and I don't know how it would be determined, but one of my concerns is the administrative cost. You know, what portion of this will be consumed by administrative cost? And I echo John's concern about how it's determined that, you know, people would be eligible for it, because I don't know how thorough a background is checked, is being done, and things of that nature, but I would like to think that we're being very judicious in the care and management of this without using too much of it for administrative costs. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mark.
In the packet, and I know you don't have a complete packet, but you can go online, the three grants that are administered under this program are broken down in services and administrative costs, so you can go down and see what is spent on administration in the programs.
I apologize, Mayor. I forgot to identify myself. Lorraine O'Neal, 3001 West Weddington, Apartment 82 in Fayetteville. Sorry.
You're...
Sorry.
I should have reminded you. Anyone else like to address us on this? Okay. Yolanda, do you want to address the administrative costs? I know Mark just mentioned it. Do you have anything else you want to add to that?
Again, just echoing what Mark has stated, that there are limits and caps to what is utilized for administrative purposes, so I want to assure you that we would meet all of those. HUD does do their monitoring, and we have never had any issues with our administrative costs on our other federal grants, so I'm happy to say that we have been in compliance for many years. I've been in charge of our CDBG programs, which are HUD programs now for 15 years, and we have never had any issues with over expenditure on administrative costs.
Okay. Thank you, Yolanda. Anyone else like to address us? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council.
Mayor, I would just like to say that I'm very happy that we, as a city, can take over this particular grant and administer it so that we can help the homeless people of our city. I'm sorry that the nonprofit that started it cannot complete it, but I'm delighted that we can step in and take over, so I'm very supportive of this.
Thank you, Della. Anybody else? Any final comments?
We'll pass the resolution.
Second? We have a motion to second to pass the resolution. Any final comments? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Luttrell.
No.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Okay. Number two, an ordinance to enact Article 28, City Board of Health, in Chapter 33, Departments, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities of the Fayetteville Code. Chief, I believe you have this? Oops, I'm sorry. Blake, I'm sorry. I apologize. You've got to read that.
Whereas the City Board of Health was first created by Resolution Number 02-03 on January 7th, 2003, but those provisions have never been codified, and whereas the current City Board of Health recommends that the city continue to fill the position of City Health Officer even though it is no longer required by state law, and that the City Health Officer serve without compensation. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeals Resolution Number 02-03. Section 2, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby enacts Article 28, City Board of Health, in Chapter 33, Departments, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, as shown below. 33.400, Composition, Membership. The City Board of Health shall consist of five members appointed by the mayor, at least two of whom shall be physicians of good professional standing. Members shall serve during the term of the mayor who appoints them. The mayor shall also serve as an ex officio member of the City Board of Health. 33.401, City Health Officer. A City Health Officer who shall be a competent physician of reputable professional standing who is legally qualified to practice medicine in Arkansas shall be appointed by the mayor and approved by the City Council. The City Health Officer shall serve as the chairperson of the City Board of Health during the term of the mayor who appoints him or her. The City Health Officer shall have those powers and duties conferred by state law or city ordinance, but shall not be required to treat patients, prescribe medicine, or do anything else not statutorily required pursuant to Arkansas Code Annotated, Section 33.402, Powers and Duties. The City Board of Health shall have those powers and duties conferred by Arkansas Code Annotated, Section 14-262-102.
Okay. Chief?
Well, I think Blake said it all there. The law in 2003, under which the resolution was passed creating the Board of Health for the city, changed later that year, and there's a $100 honorarium in that resolution, and that's been declined by all of the City Health Officers, and this would bring the Board of Health under the city code and make it updated under the current law.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the chief? We sat on that board together, and they wanted to make these changes, so we thought it was important we bring it to you. So you have any questions for the chief, or any public... Okay. Any public comment on this? They sing none. I'll bring it back to the council.
I move, we move to the second reading.
Thank you. We have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Luttrell.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
In ordinance to enact Article 28, City Board of Health, in Chapter 33, Departments, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities of the Fayetteville Code.
I move to go to the third and final reading.
We have a motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Luttrell.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
In ordinance to enact Article 28, City Board of Health, in Chapter 33, Departments, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities of the Fayetteville Code.
Any final comments from the council on this? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Luttrell.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Okay. Number three, an ordinance resoning that property described in zoning petition RZN 15-5148 for approximately .20 acres located at 402 East 7th Street from NC Neighborhood Conservation to RMF 12, residential multifamily 12 units per acre. Blake?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from NC Neighborhood Conservation to RMF 12, residential multifamily, 12 units per acre, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached hereto and made a part herof. Section 2, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1.
Okay. Jeremy?
This property is located at 402 East 7th Street in the Walker Park Neighborhood. It is currently zoned NC, which is our Neighborhood Conservation zoning district. It's approximately a quarter of an acre. It's undeveloped. The property is requested to rezone to RMF 12, which is residential multifamily, 12 units per acre. There's a surrounding mixture of single and multifamily residential uses within this area, therefore we find the zoning to be compatible with that request. The Walker Park Neighborhood Plan seeks to preserve single-family neighborhoods while encouraging additional housing types, including multifamily, and a mixture of uses, so therefore we find it consistent also with the Walker Park Plan. The Plan Commission forwarded this item to you with a vote of 8 to 0, and staff is recommending approval.
Would that, I'd like to see anything. Are they here? Please, come on in.
Hi, my name is Zara Niederman, and thank you for having me. I wanted to answer any questions you may have. I also want to just comment and say thank you, with regard to the parking with commercial, since it's related, that I fully support reducing the, or eliminating the commercial parking requirements, and since I'm up here along the same lines, I'd like to also give my encouragement to think more about the parking requirements for residential, particularly I see a lot of need for people, one-car households, and, you know, singles who are wanting their own place, and so I'd like to encourage more dense development.
Do we have, does the council have a question for Mr. Niederman, or Jeremy? Yes, John?
I'm just curious. .2 acres, what are we going to build there? What's the purpose?
Thank you. The plan is to build two townhouses, or two units townhouses. Currently, under Neighborhood Conservation, you need 80 feet of frontage, and with the RMF 12, it's .2 acres, so it allows for two units. The requirement is 60 feet of frontage, and this property has 65 feet of frontage, so Neighborhood Conservation won't allow two families currently.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have any public comment on this? Okay. Seeing that, I'm going to bring it back to the council.
I move to go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Luttrell.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
In ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-5148 for approximately .2 acres located at 402 East 7th Street from NC Neighborhood Conservation to RMF 12, residential multifamily, 12 units per acre.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I asked Jeremy.
Sure.
Jeremy, I'm sorry, did you say the staff did recommend this?
That is correct.
Thank you. I move to go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Luttrell. Latier.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hattie.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-5148 for approximately .2 acres located at 402 East 7th Street from NC Neighborhood Conservation to RMF-12, Residential Multifamily, 12 units per acre.
Any final comments from the council on this? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Latier.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hattie.
Yes.
The ordinance passes.
Okay. Number four. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-5149 for approximately 1.27 acres located at 2975 Old Farmington Road from RSF-4 Residential Single Family, four units per acre, to RSF-8 Residential Single Family, eight units per acre. Blake?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from RSF-4 Residential Single Family, four units per acre, to RSF-8 Residential Single Family, eight units per acre, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached heretofu and made a part hereof. Section 2, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1.
Jeremy?
This property is located on the south side of Old Farmington Road, just east of One Mile Road, which is west of I-49. It contains two parcels containing approximately one and a quarter acres. There's one single-family home on the property currently. The request is to rezon the property from RSF-4 Residential Single Family, four units per acre, to RSF-8 Residential Single Family, eight units per acre. In staff's opinion, the rezoning request is compatible with surrounding land uses, which are single-family homes on a variety of lot sizes. This particular zoning district will also allow single-family homes in the minimum of 5,000 square feet. The lot sizes in this area range from 6,000 square feet to the south and north, and then larger parcels to the east and west. This is a residential neighborhood area in our city plan 2030, which supports a wide spectrum of residential uses and encourages density in all housing types. We feel it would be a compatible addition to this neighborhood, and would also continue to expand on the diversity of single-family lot sizes within the area. Staff is recommending approval, and the Planning Commission agreed as well with a vote of eight to zero.
Okay. Is the applicant, yes, you sure might.
I just wanted to explain, I'll be recusing from this vote with an interest in the property and having filed the application.
Do you have somebody to speak in your stead?
I do.
Okay. Yes.
My name's Michael Ward. I'm working with Info Group on this rezoning request, and thank you for considering this request. As Mr. Page alluded to, staff supports this, and we're pleased with Planning Commission's unanimous approval of the request, and I have no new information at this time. Here for questions if you have them.
Do we have any questions for the applicant or Jeremy on this? Okay. Any public comment on this? Saying none, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move to go to the second reading.
Second. We have a motion to second, go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Latier.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Mayor, you may vote to suspend the rules and move to the second.
I'm gonna vote to suspend the rules.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-5149 for approximately 1.27 acres located at 2975 Old Farmington Road from RSF-4 Residential Single Family, four units per acre, to RSF-8 Residential Single Family, eight units per acre.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
I second it.
Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Latier.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Mayor, you may vote.
I'm gonna vote yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-5149 for approximately 1.27 acres located at 2975 Old Farmington Road from RSF-4 Residential Single Family, four units per acre, to RSF-8 Residential Single Family, eight units per acre.
Any final comments from the council on this? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Latier.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
The ordinance passes.
Okay. Number five. An ordinance levying a tax on the real and personal property within the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas for the year 2015, fixing the rate thereof at 2.3 mils for general fund operations, .4 mils for the fireman's pension and relief fund, .4 mils for the policeman's pension and relief fund, and 1.0 mil for the Federal Public Library, and certifying the same to the county clerk of Washington County, Arkansas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Blake's gotta read it real quick.
I'm sorry, Blake.
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that a tax is hereby levied on the real and personal property within the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas for the year 2015 to be collected in 2016 for the following purposes at the following rates. Real and personal property. Purpose: General Fund Operations Levy 2.3 mils. Purpose: Fayetteville Public Library Levy 1.0 mils. Purpose: Policeman's Pension and Relief Fund 0.4 mils. Purpose: Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund 0.4 mils. Total: 4.1 mils. Section 2, that the real and personal property tax so levied and the rates provided therefore are hereby certified to the county clerk of Washington County, Arkansas, to be placed in the tax book and collected in the same manner that the county and school district taxes are collected. Section 3, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to file certified copies of this ordinance in the office of the county recorder, county clerk, county assessor, and the county tax collector for Washington County, Arkansas.
Okay. Paul?
Hey, Mayor and Council, this is a recommendation for the millage for the 2016 budget. Again, the request is 4.1 mils. Now, that's one mil more for the general fund than was levied last year. I gave an expanded presentation at the agenda session last Tuesday, and would encourage any members of the public who wish to view that for a little more information, go out on our website and view that agenda session for more information. I'm not going to go over that exact presentation at this point in time, but I'm gonna hit some of the highlights. The highlight of the general fund budget is, the request is an increase of $3 million from $38.1 million to $41.1 million. Basic reason for the increase, or the large portion of the increase, is due to the request of putting on an additional 23 positions that were previously unfunded. Nineteen of those positions would be in police and fire. This would allow the police to add an extra beat, which would be six additional positions, also allow one motorcycle patrol officer, and the addition or restoration of one dispatcher that was frozen back in 2011. It would also include, it would also include four other positions in various departments, one in parks, one in budget, one in the prosecutor's office, and one in building safety. So this would be 23 newly funded positions. In addition to that, the budget needs to be increased by a million dollars, and that is because of the raises that we granted last April. So that encompasses both the salary increases, also the insurance associated, unemployment compensation, things of that nature. In addition to that, the funding request is also to increase our payment to the emergency ambulance service, $185,000. That is so they can meet the metrics of calls that they have established. Also, $100,000 included in the budget for a compensation study, and that study was authorized by the council to be done every four years, and I think that's an important study, because that tells us whether or not we're being competitive in wages, and it's very expensive for turnover here at the city, especially in police and fire, because it takes a long time before those police and firefighters can in fact function on their own. A lot of training, they have to attend academies, things of that nature. So the key reason that we're asking for this property tax increase is for the addition to public safety, and I'm going to stop there and allow any questions. However, I am going to indicate that the police chief and fire chief are going to do presentations to explain their particular needs to you, and how it will respond to maintaining the current metrics for calls here in the city.
Do we have any questions for Paul, or do you want to hear the police chief? Yes, John.
Paul, before the presentation by police and fire, speaking legally, legal authority, once this tax is passed and it goes into the general fund, is there anything that binds the city to spend the money for police, fire, and public safety?
No.
Nothing?
No. It funds the entire general fund.
Okay. So, for us to sit here and talk about the needs in police and fire, there's nothing binding in this ordinance that makes us spend the money on police and fire?
No, but the fact that we put them into the budget means that those positions will be there and expense will be created.
Can we take them out of the budget?
Police and fire?
Sure.
These additional positions? Yes.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear what we're voting on here. We're voting for an increase in the general fund spending. It may or may not go to public safety. We're talking about going to public safety, but there's nothing binding in this that makes us put it to public safety.
Okay. The council is going to finally approve the budget before December. We're required, or the mayor is required, to come forward with his budget in December. At that point in time, it will contain the request for these positions.
We vote on budget adjustments every meeting.
Yes, that's correct.
Budgets get adjusted. There's nothing binding here. Just so we're clear on what we're voting for.
Absolutely, John. Nothing's binding here.
Good. Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't want us to play the smoke and mirror game.
I'm not playing it.
Here's what we're voting for when really it's just general fund spending.
Well, that'll be for you all to determine. Yes, Adella?
Yes. I would just like to say that I feel that it's our responsibility as the city council to decide where the money goes, and all the nine years that I've been on the council, that's the way it's been. So I don't see any chance that it's gonna change.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
I'll echo Adella's sentiment. I think there's a certain amount of public trust put in our elected officials that are sitting here at this table, and if that's what we say it's gonna go for, then I think that if we vote for it, the public should trust that we're going to do that, or vote us out of office the next time.
That's correct.
I mean, the one thing I guess I should have made clear, or these are almost what I would call fungible assets. They're moved together, and once that revenue comes in, you can't determine which dollar is which where. So, it's spent on general fund purposes, but we certainly discuss the intent.
Okay. Chief DeRan, would you like to present your presentation?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thanks for this opportunity to demonstrate to you the impact of Fayetteville's population growth on the fire department's ability to save lives and property. I'll try to keep this under an hour and a half for my presentation. I'll do my best. As the population grows, let me find my button. There it is. Fire department's impacted in four basic ways. Our call volume increases, that's the demand for service increases, our response times increase, our survival rates in cardiac arrest decrease, and the amount of property we can This is a population of the, the history of the population of Fayetteville. So it shows in 1985, there was a population of just 140,000. Last year, Fayetteville had over 80,000 citizens. Some estimates put the population's growth in 2020 at over 88,000. This is a map showing the density of the population and the location. You can see it's contained mostly right here in the center of the city, and there's some up here in the northern sector, and then out west. So those are the most dense areas of the city's population. Darker shades are the more dense areas. This is a map of the city that shows the first-in-response area for each of our seven fire stations, as indicated by the thick black lines. The colored areas surrounding each fire station, if you can see, is a, that's a mile and a half drive time around each fire station, and the areas outside of the colored areas around each fire station is outside of a four-minute drive time. And this is significant, because our benchmark is to try to be on the scene of an emergency in six minutes or less. Ninety percent of the time is the national standard, according to the National Fire Protection Association. So, the six minutes is significant, because one minute of the total response time is for call processing at the dispatch center and dispatching the appropriate units. Another minute is for turnout time for the firefighters to put on their protective equipment, get on the fire truck, and get out the door. And then the four-minute drive time to put us on the scene in six minutes or less. That's what we'd like to do. This is our call volume increase from 2004 till 2014. So in the last 10, in the 10-year period, we've had a 58% increase in our total call volume, and in the past five years, a 30% increase, and this puts pressure on our emergency This map shows the call volume density within the city. So, you can see that the population density areas are the same areas where we have the majority of our calls. So on this map, green is good. The yellow and the red and the orange are where the most calls happen. So again, it's right here in the core of the city, in that northern section, and then over here out west. This is the call volume over the 10-year period on emergency calls only. So while we responded to 9,250 total calls in 2014, we grade our response times on the time-sensitive calls only, like fires, medical calls, motor vehicle accidents. What's not included are the service calls, and the utility checks, and mutual aid and test calls. As you can see, we've gone from 5,025 calls in 2004, emergency calls, up to 7,387 in This map is the six-minute response time areas. So here, the red is bad, the green is good, the orange and the yellow are the areas where we do not arrive on the scene within six minutes. So this is a collective figure from all of the fire stations, all the fire companies. So, the red, a lot of the red area is pastured, so of course it's gonna be red, because we haven't been there unless there's been a brush fire there. But the core areas are the places where we still have trouble, because that's the most calls. We have trouble with these companies being out of pocket, and then these outlined companies, like Engine Five out here, and Ladder Three, and Ladder Seven, have to come into the core of the city, and therefore, they're not in their area to respond to the next call that they're gonna have. So why six minutes? For fire suppression. When responding to structure fires, the primary time constraint for first-arriving companies is prevention of flashover. Flashover is defined as the transition from a growing fire to a fully-developed fire. to a fully-developed fire in which all combustible items in the compartment are involved in the fire. During this period, temperatures may reach twelve hundred degrees Fahrenheit, and it eliminates any chance of occupant's survival or of rescue by the firefighters. Although each structured fire presents a unique set of factors for fire development, it's generally agreed that flashover will occur in a structure seven to ten minutes after ignition. So these are the unknowns, the time of ignition and when the fire's discovered. So that time period is unknown. Once a 911's called, they have a minute to process the call, dispatch the units. Then the units have a, we try to get out of the house in our bunker gear and out of the house in a minute. And then four minutes' drive time to get to the scene and get water on the fire as rapidly as possible to prevent the flashover. Once the flashover happens, we've lost the structure ninety-nine percent of the time. So that's our critical point, to be able to save the property. So our response times in under six minutes, from 2004 till 2014, you can see it's gone from seventy percent of the time we were arriving at the scene in under six minutes in 2004, till it's gone down steadily. In 2014, we're only arriving on the scene sixty-two percent of the time. This slide shows the property loss and the property saved. Up here at the top, the orange line is the property saved. And this is the percentage of the property saved out of the number of properties that we encountered. So a threatened property is one on fire or flood. And the property, we've gone from ninety-eight point three percent of saving the property that we encountered down to ninety-five point five percent of the threatened property that we've saved in 2014. And property loss mirrors that. We've gone from saving one point seven percent, or lost, this is property loss. So we lost one point seven percent of the property we encountered in 2004. 2014, we've lost four point five percent of the properties that we encountered. This slide shows the chain of survival from the American Heart Association, the American Medical Association. In the event of a cardiac arrest, we need early recognition and the call for help. That's over here. Then citizen CPR, early CPR, once the heart stops. This is when the fire department arrives with the defibrillators and shocks the heart to try to get the circulation going again. And this is the advanced paramedic life support that arrives on the scene with the ambulance. So this is an ideal chain of survival in which someone has the best opportunity to survive a cardiac arrest. So with cardiac arrest, why six minutes? The American Heart Association and American Medical Association have established this industry standard for emergency response to cardiac arrest. Cardiac arrest, the highest hospital discharge rate has been achieved in patients whom CPR was initiated within four minutes of arrest and advanced cardiac life support within eight minutes. Early bystander rescue breathing and CPR intervention and fast emergency medical services responses are therefore essential in improving survival rates and good necrological recovery rates. That's from the American Medical Association. Now, here again, the heart attack occurs. There's an unknown time till it's discovered. Then an unknown time for when 911's called. Once 911, the dispatchers are notified. They try to process the call in a minute. Firefighters try to get on the truck and out the door within a minute. Four minutes to arrive to the scene of the cardiac arrest and get in the house or up the stairs to the patient, hook up the defibrillator, and we try to do that within eight to ten minutes, or there's a biological death. This is the cardiac arrest save rate that we've experienced from 2007 until 2014. As you can see, in 2007, we had a survival rate of thirty-seven percent. And in 2014, the survival rate has decreased down to twenty-two percent of cardiac arrest. So we're not saving as many people as we did when they have cardiac arrest. So rapid response saves lives. And the response times and the save rates are related. This chart plots the call volume increase per year from 2004 through 2014, and then projects future call volume numbers based on that level of increase. So the numbers in the red boxes are the number of calls that we have this year, each year. And then it's a four point eight one percent growth from 2004 till 2014. And from that point on, it's projected to be four point eight one percent per year out through 2020. Now, the, in 2004, we had seventy percent arrival time in under six minutes. The last time we placed a new fire company in service was 2005, when Station Seven was open, right here. We did build a new fire station in 2008. However, it was, we relocated a fire company at that time. And so in 2007, our save rate in cardiac arrest was thirty-seven percent. Come up here to 2014, sixty-two percent response in under six minutes, and a save rate in cardiac arrest down to twenty-two percent. Now, this trend's going to continue. The pressures on the public safety systems in the city are going to continue if the population continues to grow. So this is not a one-time fix for what's happening. This is a public safety infrastructure that we're going to have to continue to address periodically toward the future. And so here's what we're requesting in 2016, is to add a rescue engine company that are down at Station One, over here on center, and move the big ladder truck there down to Station Six, over behind the McDonald's on Hollywood. So this shows adding a ladder in 2018, and then in 2020, adding a new engine. And so we would have added then three new units into the system between now and 2020, to try to level off our, level off and improve our cardiac arrest save rates, improve our amount of property saved, and address our increasing response times. So what we're requesting, in order to address the service demand from our citizens, the fire department recommends creating a new fire company and unfreezing our two frozen positions. A fire company is ten firefighters with a fire truck. And we can, this will create a company in the core of the city so that the outlying fire companies can stay at home, not at home, but stay in their first-in areas when, more often. And so that should improve the cardiac arrest survival rates. Our response times will improve, and we'll be able to save more property. Now, the other position that we want to unfreeze is the Safety and Supply Battalion Chief. And I've listed some of that position's duties that we need to be unfrozen, that are currently being done by the Training Chief. And he, some of these things are, none of these things are being done as well as they could be with someone dedicated to the safety of the department. So with that, that's all of my presentation. It was under an hour and a half, I know, but I'm ready to answer any questions you might have about it.
Do we have any questions for the chief? Yes, John?
Chief, thanks for your presentation. I'm very much in favor of public safety. I'm very appreciative of the job you and your men do and your women.
Thank you.
Everybody on the fire department. Every time you get on that truck, every time you put on your boots and pull over your safety equipment, you put your life in your hands. In my job, if I make a mistake, I flip my pencil over and erase it. In your job, if you make a mistake, the rest of us go to a funeral. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have the utmost respect for you and the fire department. I suppose what's haunting me in the back of my mind is this council was discussing giving the Walden Arts Center fifty thousand dollars earlier this year, and I raised that very issue of unfunded frozen positions. And you stood here and told us you didn't need them. You had everybody you had, you needed. Now you're telling us the opposite. What's changed?
One position's not going to impact the response times. It takes a unit, and the response times are number-one priority. And then one person, which we're feeling right now and can continue with overtime, is just not going to impact that. It takes a fire unit, which is the ten members, to really impact that.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Chief Taber?
One second. Don't let him take credit for it not being an hour and a half. We told him we was going to taze him if he took more than ten minutes. So you can thank us for that, not him. First of all, let me apologize for my speech. I've been having a lot of dental work done. I promise I haven't been drinking, okay? It's due to dental work. So if I sound like I can't pronounce my S's, it's probably because I cannot. Just a little reminder, everybody but Mr. Laturo, remember this. Last year, about the same time, Alderman Long brought up us adding five new police positions. We looked at that. Some of the things I'll talk about tonight in more detail, code zeros, response times, were ticking up a little bit at that point. I think that was in the second, maybe toward the end of the second quarter of last year, maybe about the same time this year. We just didn't feel like that was enough to make a trend. At that time, we told you guys we would promise to watch that, which we have continued to do. And I'll give you the results of what we found since, basically, about the second quarter of fourteen to now. A little more history I want to give. The last time the police department received any new personnel was the budget year of 2016. We added ten new personnel at that time, which put us to a total staff, total sworn staff of a hundred and...
Not, chief, not 2016.
But I'm sorry.
Yeah, we had...
Twenty oh si, oh six, sorry. You got my dates wrong. And oh six is the last time we added ten officers. Moved us to a total staff of a hundred and twenty. That's what we have today, is a hundred and twenty. We've been up and down a little bit between oh six and today due to freezes and grants and some things like that. So we are exactly the same amount of sworn personnel that we had in twenty, I'll keep, I was about to say it again, 2006. We were able, in 2009 and '10, we froze four positions due to budget constraints. We were able to get those back. One was through a grant from the state. The other was a federal grant where we added three SROs. So that's how we were able to get the four positions back. So I'll start in my presentation now. Talk just a little bit about what we think is attributing to our increased workload, code zeros, and response time. First is the population of the city. Those numbers will probably be a little different than what you're used to looking at. They're definitely different than Chief Dayringer's. We get our population numbers from the FBI. The FBI gives us those numbers, and they do it the same way across the country. That way, you're comparing apples to apples when you're looking at population and when you're looking at the crime rate. So what you'll notice is a dip in 2011, right here. So what happens is, up until 2010, the FBI gives us an estimated number. And then once the census is done, they kick it back to what the actual number is. So that's why you see a dip in the population between ten and eleven is because of the actual census number that was given. Here's one of the big ones. Everyone knows the enrollment at the universities went up significantly. And what I've done is I went back to 2005, since this is the area, last time we received new personnel. Obviously, between 2005 and the numbers that just come out a few days ago, the university has seen a fifty percent increase in enrollment. Of those twenty-six thousand, you see the number here, fifty-seven hundred live on campus. Now, the remainder of those all do not live in the city of Fayetteville. I'm sure we've got students that live in Rogers, Springdale, West Fork, Pear Grove, everywhere else. But what we do know is they come here to go to school. So at some point, they're on our roads, eating at our restaurants, and being entertained. So at some time, we're dealing with them where there's a traffic accident or those types of things. Next is square miles. And what we're talking about is inside the city limits of Fayetteville, a ten percent increase since 2005. You know, every time Jeremy's Division sends us a subdevelopment that's being talked about, we usually say, hey, building ten houses in some subdivision is not going to have that much of an impact on us as far as call load goes. However, what happens is, when you do that a hundred times, fifty times, a thousand times, then it does start having an impact on our calls for service. Also, there's much difference in building a new subdivision with single-family homes on the east side of town and building The View, The Domain, The Cardinal, The Maple, and all those things. Obviously, those are very different types of developments. So over time, those developments do impact us. One might not, but over time, they definitely impact our calls for service. Go ahead, Mike. Road miles, same kind of thing, ten percent increase. I thought that was kind of interesting. It was pretty much the same amount of increase as the square miles that we have. Once again, you know, if you add a block of road, it doesn't have much effect. But as the years go by and those add up, that's just more roads we have patrol, more roads that have accidents on and those types of things. So we'll get into a little more specifics now and talk about our call load. These are broke out by quarters because everyone knows a summer in Fayetteville is different than a fall in Fayetteville because of Box Blues BBQ, ballgames, university, and those types of things. You will notice the blue bars are fourteen, and the, if you're, I guess, a Texas fan, the burnt orange bars are fifteen. So you can see in the first quarter, between fourteen and fifteen, we had a two percent increase, not that big of an increase. Second quarter creeped up a little bit, six point nine percent increase. And then in the third quarter, even though we're not through with the third quarter exactly yet, we estimated that based on how many weeks we were into the third quarter and estimated that out for the entire quarter. So as you can see, certainly be a big, big increase there, nineteen percent. And then on the fourth quarter, obviously, we're not in the fourth quarter, so we made an estimate there. And how we estimated that was we took these three percent increases, averaged them, and come up with that number. So that's just a scientific guess is the best we can do for the fourth quarter. But as you can see, pretty steady increase. You know, when you look at the fourth quarter, you got to start talking about things. College kids gone for Thanksgiving, college kids gone for break, weather, all those kind of things. So as you can see, the fall, end of summer and fall is definitely the busiest time of the year for us. Mike, go ahead. These are our Priority One calls. I'm sure everybody, we've had this discussion before. Priority One calls are life-and-death-type situations. They're the most serious calls we have. It typically requires at least two officers to go to those calls. Sometimes the mayor went with me on a call last Wednesday or Thursday night, and we had every single person working that was there. So sometimes it takes eight, ten, twelve officers. But they at least require two officers on Priority One calls. Once again, same scenario. Blue bars were last year. The orange bars are this year. As you can see, stepping up pretty significantly as we go. Once again, this is an estimate based on these numbers. So, you know, a twenty-seven percent increase in one year is a pretty significant increase in the amount of Priority One calls we've had in that third quarter. If, once again, that estimate holds true. And I don't have any reason to believe that it wouldn't based on everything we're seeing. Response times. And once again, this is for Priority One calls. And this is, you'll have to bear with me, this is maybe a little complicated here. I think I can explain it. So this, we're not comparing quarter to quarter. We actually just put them right in order. So as you can see, you know, jumped up a little bit, a little flat, jumped up. Now, you see this decrease between the first quarter of fifteen and the second quarter of fifteen. And to try to explain that, what we done is we done, Alderman Long had this idea, I think, put it in our head of adding this extra beat. So what we done is we done a trial nine beat, starting at the end of May of this year. And basically, we didn't have really enough manpower to do that, but we paid the overtime and done a trial nine beat. So when you look at this, three months of this nine beat, five weeks of that three months is actually in the second quarter of fifteen. So that's why you see this decrease from five twenty to five oh eight is because part of this trial nine beat, five weeks of it, is over in this quarter. of this trial nine beat, five weeks of it, is over in this quarter. Everybody making sense to everybody so far? And so, what we had hoped to do is, we wanted to come to you, not with just saying, we think this will work by adding a ninth beat and adding a motorcycle. We wanted to see if we could in fact prove it would work. And I think we've done that. As you can see, when we done this trial nine beat for one quarter, basically, our, because you can't, I don't think we can really use this number because that's not a real number. We really went from a five-minute, twenty response time down to a four-minute, fifty-eight-second response time. Why five-minute response time? We really don't have anything like the fire department where you've got flashover or cardiac arrest, they need to be the hospital. That's a standard we've used for many, many, far back as I can remember, that's the standard we've used. If you look at some Department of Justice studies, some of the worst cities have in the ten, twelve-minute range in the country. Some of the best cities have about four minutes. Would I love to be at four minutes? I'd love to be. But I think if we can stay around that five-minute mark, that's a metric we've had for years. And I think that's a pretty reasonable number to be at. Okay, go ahead, Mike. Code zeros, remind you what code zeros are. Code zeros are any time that we have a Priority One or Priority Two call come in, that an officer is not readily available to send to that call. You call and say, my house is, somebody's breaking in my house, and all the officers are busy, we do not have somebody to send to that call. Once again, this is in quarter order. As you can see, it was, you know, fairly, fairly flat here, took a jump here, and then the same scenario applies. So, this number being lower is, I'm assuming, all in part because of this trial nine beat, five weeks of it was in that quarter there, which lowers this number. I'm quite confident if we haven't had the trial nine beat, that this forty-four would have continued in an upward trend. I feel quite confident. Go ahead, Mike. Talk about the motor officer for just a second. I'm sure you guys have all seen them. They are basically what we use for traffic enforcement. They work, all the accidents, they can work. And accidents are probably the most time-consuming thing that an officer does out there. So, what it does is it frees up an officer to answer those other calls where we can drive that response time down, where we can drive those code zeros down. Each motor officer, we currently have three right now. We were down to two because we had one injured. And what happened was, when we decided to do the nine-beat trial, we went ahead and took an officer and made a motor officer out of him, once again, to make sure that if we added a motor officer, we could see those numbers go down. So, that's what we did. Each motor officer works about eight percent of the total accidents. And so, if we had four, that'd be thirty-two percent of all the accidents in the city, they would work. And what that does, based on the average time to work in an accident, it would save about seventy hours a month for a patrol officer to not be working that accident and to be out, once again, answering those calls, driving those code zeros and that response time down. They do a lot of other things besides accidents, but that was the one thing that we could actually put a time on. They handle most of our parking complaints and other time-consuming things. Alderman Long, you know, we've had a huge problem over at Holcomb School just in the last two, three, four weeks. And the motor officer was the one that handled the biggest part of that. So, once again, by adding that motor officer, not only does it free up all this time of seventy hours that they can, that a patrolman can be answering calls, they cover lots of other things that if they weren't out there, they would have to be, a patrol officer would have to be answering that call. Talk about the beat map for just a minute. This is the current beat map, shows a, and when I say eight beat, nine beat, I want to make sure that y'all understand that that's a minimum number, not a maximum number. So, there's times, you know, depending on vacation, sick leave, training, court, FMLA, all those other things that we could be over that amount. This is a minimum amount. This map was put in place in the fall of two thousand and nine. We switched to twelve-hour shifts in two thousand and nine, and this new beat map was devised then. It is based on, you notice, obviously, you know, this, the east side of town, the areas are much bigger than they are here in the center of town. It wasn't done based on the size of the area, it was done based on workload. It has an equal amount of workload in each area. So, hopefully, what that does, I think you guys have heard me talk about obligated and unobligated time. Obligated time is the time that an officer is going on a call, answering a call. Unobligated time is the, basically, the free time the officer has to drive around, patrol the neighborhoods, get out in the parks, talk to the kids, go to the Yvonne Richardson Center and those kind of things. So, this is based with the theory that if they have an equal amount of workload, then they will also have the same amount of unobligated time. It also gives the same percentage chance that every officer in every area will be available for a call when one is available in an area. We do not what's called cross-beat dispatch in all scenarios. So, for example, if I'm working Zone Four and a call comes in in Zone Seven, the only way dispatch is sending me across town to answer that call is if it's a Priority One or Two. If I'm in Zone Seven and I had my Halloween decorations stolen last night, dispatch is not going to send someone clear across town to answer that. They're going to wait till that Beat Seven unit is available to do that. And so, that's another reason that the more we can keep people in their areas, the more it reduces response time. Because what happens, soon as you send this guy down here to Zone Seven, well, guess what? You get a call up here, now he's having to go all the way from here back to there, which increases response time. So, the more we can keep people in their own areas, the more it helps on response times. The next one is the proposed nine-beat map. It's done in the very exact same scenario, based on workload and with a theory to have the same amount of obligated and unobligated time for each officer. You can tell, it moved all the boundaries around just a little bit. But basically, what it done is it changed most of the area right here in the center of town. So, obviously, that tells us one, two, three, and nine are where probably most of the calls are occurring. It did, like I said, it moved, it made eight a little smaller, it made one come over here a little bit. So, it does change some of the boundaries around. But like I said, it's completely done on workload and the theory that the officer would have the same amount of unobligated time versus obligated time. I want to make it clear that these officers were asking for, we're not asking to start a new unit. These officers are to go to patrol to keep up with the amount of workload we have. It's to drive the code zeros down, it's to drive the response time down. You know, one of the best things you can do from crime prevention is to have an officer out there meeting the public, greeting the public in a non-enforcement type situation. So, the more free time these officers can have, I think the better job we do. And we drive crime down by having officers out there, talking to people, shaking hands in the neighborhoods, going to the parks, and interacting with the public in a non-enforcement way. So, hopefully, this will help do that also. Anytime you put more officers on the streets, they should have more time to do that. And talk about the added dispatcher for just one second. That dispatcher position was frozen. And obviously, this, in two thousand and fourteen, we're going to have about forty-three thousand calls. In two thousand and fifteen, we expect to have about almost forty-six thousand calls. So, there's a significant increase in the amount of calls. So, that's one reason to add the dispatcher, just to increase calls. And I'll try to talk about the fire department here in a second. So, Chief, if I butcher this, come, save me. When the fire department has an actual structure fire, their on-scene commander goes to a different radio channel so he can talk to his people that are actually at the fire. If we don't have enough dispatchers available, the ideal situation is for one of our dispatchers to go to that same channel so dispatch can follow what's going on on the fire grounds. If we don't have enough dispatchers available, then we don't have, they're not able to switch over to that fire channel, and that fire commander is having to listen to his guys on one channel and it switches radio channel and relay that information back to dispatch, which is obviously not an ideal situation. Was that a fair, obviously not.
No, I thought you did that real well. And it's happening more and more frequently because the, we're actually, the number of fires we have are actually going up. So, the shift commanders have been talking about it more and more often. So, it is a dangerous situation that this would help address.
And I think that concludes it for me. I'll try to answer any questions that you have.
What questions do we have, Chief? Anything? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. All right. What public comment do we have? Now, okay, bring it back to the council. I would prefer if we would leave this on this reading this week. Sure there's going to be more discussion on it. Anything else? Yes, Alan?
If we could, I'd like to have copies of those presentations.
Absolutely. If you have anything you want.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I just want to reiterate, I appreciate Chief Taber and Chief Dayringer and the jobs they do. But remember what we were told at the beginning of the presentation. There's nothing legally binding. We can change the funding anytime we want to, the city council can. We're not committing these funds to police or fire. We're increasing the tax on our citizens without a public vote. I think it'd be very fair to let the people vote if they want to pay the extra tax or not, instead of us imposing our will on the people. This is coming out of their pockets. It may make a two-hundred-dollar-a-year tax difference, it may make a hundred-dollar-a-year. But for the guy who's living paycheck to paycheck, ten dollars a month more on his mortgage payment and to his escrow account to pay those property taxes, it's going to be hard to sell to them. That's where my heart lies. Those of us who are affluent, who have college educations, who have good jobs, a hundred, two-hundred dollars a year doesn't matter much to us. But there are a lot of people who change our oil at Walmart, who hang our sheet rock or paint our houses. They don't have that privilege. They'll probably never set foot inside of the Walton Arts Center. But they're going to be paying for this additional tax. So, I would urge my colleagues on this city council to think of them when you vote. And think about, are we really committing this money to public safety? I agree, you do have to trust us with your tax dollars, how we spend them. I'm just concerned that our police and our fire don't have a designated mill like our library does. I would think that the fire department is at least as important as the library. As far as I know, the library doesn't save any lives. It educates us. The firemen save our lives. Why don't we give them a designated mill? So, then it takes it out of our discretion and designates it for public safety. That would be a true public safety vote. I'm afraid what's before us right now is not a true public safety vote. Thank you.
Paul, you want to address any of that?
If I just will make a comment, this is discretionary milled. There is no authority in the statutes to allow a specific designation that is required to public safety. So, there's nothing in the statute that really authorizes that. Blake, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But that's it. When it comes to discretionary milled, it is the discretion of the council. So, statutorily, there's no authority for a designated milled for public safety. This has been raised before, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Now, Paul, when we talk about, how much of this milled would go toward public safety?
Well, we talked about the additional positions being one million, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. If we take out the positions that aren't directly public safety, about one million, two-hundred thousand, so almost the entire amount would go to that. However, if we also want to factor in the two-hundred thousand dollars, or a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars actually, that would go to emergency, the emergency ambulance service, almost the entire amount would go to police, fire, and the central AMS system.
And that will be in the budget?
That would be in the budget, and it certainly, certainly is the council's authority to approve that budget. So, that would be up to the council. We could not, as an administration or a staff, decided we wanted to use that on some other purpose. The city council does in fact approve the budget. That's, would be my only comment to that.
Okay.
And Mayor, along the lines of Alderman Latour's comment, the Arkansas Constitution and statutes authorize several different types of millages that can be levied against personal and real property. It can go to general government activities, which is what this is for, bonded indebtedness, library maintenance and operation, library capital improvements and construction, and police and firemen's pension funds. And those are the only categories that the city's authorized to levy a milled for.
Mayor.
Yes?
Again, I'd reiterate, I don't want us to be confused about what we're voting for. We're voting for a general tax increase on our people. There's nothing that requires the money to go to fire and police, other than those of us up here who will vote to put it there. We just spent three hundred thousand, over three hundred thousand dollars on a special study for single-stream recycling, over three hundred thousand dollars. We just spent thirty-five or forty thousand dollars holding a special election. We spend a lot of money here. And I realize running the city's not like running my household. But it bothers me that we spend all this money, and now we can't make our budget, we have to increase our tax. And let's be clear, we're going from one-point-three mills in the general fund to two-point-three mills. That's a seventy-seven percent increase. That's a very hefty increase. Chief Taber showed us our university population over ten years increased fifty percent. That's a big increase. We're increasing this tax, and with one vote, seventy-seven percent. That is huge. I would think that we could cut some spending somewhere.
Mayor. Yes, Mark?
If we're going to be absolutely clear here, I want to be absolutely clear about funding. If we have three hundred thousand that goes to a study that impacts our solid waste stream, that comes out of an enterprise fund, not a general fund. And so, it's irrelevant to put it in this as a point because our enterprise fund is operated quite separately than our general fund.
Paul, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
When we set our prices for our enterprise funds, they're set. While we're charging our customers for trash collection, recycling, for water and sewer and all the services we provide, those prices are set to allow for that three hundred thousand dollars to be spent. If we weren't spending that three hundred thousand dollars, we could lower our prices and people would have more freed-up income to pay the higher tax. So, I would have to disagree with Alderman Kenyon. It is not irrelevant. It's still money coming from the public's funds, whether it be an enterprise or a general fund. So, don't be confused by that. If the public's paying it, it's coming from our money, our, the public's money, not the city's money.
Yes, Matthew.
When I went back to college, I got a degree in math, for some reason. And I have this book at home, which wasn't one of my textbooks, which I really like. It's called How to Lie with Statistics. It's a great piece of satire. And, you know, this comment that we're raising taxes by seventy-seven percent reminded me of that book. You know, you could really spin this any way. I think our total budget is somewhere around a hundred and forty million. You know, it's just as fair for me to say that we're raising tax, taxes by, what, point six percentage points? I mean, you could really take this to any extreme you wanted. I think what's important to note here is, there's only one way to pay for new police and new firemen. There's only one way, according to state law. This is the way to do it. We need new policemen, we need new firemen. And to the extent that this doesn't bind us, that we could use this money for anything, you know what? That's absolutely true. And I'd like to ask any of my colleagues, raise their hand and volunteer to commit political suicide by baiting and switching the public with a vote for new taxes for police and fire and then doing something else with them. I mean, the fact is, we just need it, and it's the only way to do it.
Okay. Well, we're going to leave it right here, and then we'll be back in two weeks. All right. Okay. Well, I believe that concludes our business. Does anybody have any announcements?
Yes, actually. Got to get my calendar out. We will have our Ward Four meeting September twenty-eighth. That'll be in Room One-Eleven of City Hall at six P.M.
Anybody else? All right, thank y'all. We're done.